Roll call, Vicki? She's here.
Here. So I'm getting a phone call.
Excuse.
Here.
Here.
Delayed.
Here.
Excuse. Here, thank you. Matt, would you please review the fire exits?
Yeah, exits are in the back of the LGI.
Thank you. We're going to begin with open to the public. Is there, Anri, is anyone signed up on the? Thank you so much. We have some new faces here tonight, so I just want to remind everyone that we have a four-minute limit for public speaking. And we're going to start with Tara Beardsley.
Oh, Josephine's going to go ahead of me, I'm sorry.
How long again?
She wanted to go first. I signed ahead.
How long, four minutes, okay.
Is that okay?
Sure.
Hi, my name is Josephine Mallon, and I hosted one of the students from the Gemering Exchange Program. I don't really have anything super complex prepared, but I wanted to talk about how the exchange program affected me. It gave me a lifelong friendship with someone that I definitely wouldn't have had that opportunity to without this program. And she's basically me in Germany, like she's like my exact twin, and I'm so thankful that I got to meet her through this program. And I know that it was the same for a lot of people in the program. And it like allowed me not only to get closer with the people from Germany, but the hosts here, because I hung out with people that I have never hung out with before and now I still talk to. So that's fun. And I think the exchange program is very beneficial, because not only does it allow us to create bonds with different countries, but it also provides opportunities for people that maybe couldn't travel because of expenses, to go to a different country and get a new experience. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to follow. Thanks, Josephine. I'm Tara Beardsley. We also hosted a family for Germany. I'm reading my daughter's because she could not make it tonight, so I just highlighted some points because she wrote two pages. So I just, I'm going to go over some of it and she's going to submit the thing. So my daughter's Taryn Beardsley, and we hosted. So I'm going to do, to begin with, many or most kids, especially within the USA, have had very little awareness of how life is like in other parts of the world. Sure, you could Google it, but they would only get, they would only get answers to specific questions, and there are a lot of differences in other countries compared to America, that you wouldn't even think to ask about. Sorry. Even as a kid, that you wouldn't even think to ask about, even if a kid has traveled there for vacation or something sort of that isn't related to the family experience a tourist does. A student exchange program, on the other hand, not only introduces you to a new language, a new culture, and new people, but you have the people to guide you through it, who you have met before, in a way that truly immerses you into the daily life, especially with the opportunity to go to their school, which I can speak on, because when the student came to our house, she kind of pushed Taryn way out of her comfort zone, and when they were talking, they were so amazed how different their school was, our school was, our house was, you know, differences. It was, it was really cool to listen to, and to talk to families, because we still talk to the families to this day. So that's something else. Let me jump up. New adventures. It will give you new adventures, teach you to adjust and to change new environments. It can and will make you more open-minded, and introduce you to people and new social systems. And then I'm going to just jump off. It is also generally providing an opportunity for some kids to travel out of the country for the very first time, who may not have already, may not have otherwise had the chance to do so. And then she has a lot more in here, but I'm not going to put that. So that, that's what Taryn says. And then I pretty much backpacked on that one, because it has opened her in the school to do things. She's actually, just like Josephine said, she's made friends and talks to people now that she, she wouldn't talk to people. So that's really cool. I'm, I know it's four minutes, so I don't know if I have enough time, but they asked me to read a letter. So is that okay?
I mean, you can read up to four minutes.
Okay, so tell me when to stop. I don't have highlights on this one.
And you're welcome to submit it to the board if you can't finish it.
Okay, I think she did. This letter is from whom?
Stephanie Rowland.
Thank you. So Ms. Rowland is saying, "I am writing to express my support for the German-American Student Exchange Program between the students from Germoring, Munich area of Germany, and from Beacon, New York. I firmly believe that this program brings immense cultural education and personal benefits to the students involved, fosters stronger ties between our communities. As resident of the diverse city of Beacon, we have a unique opportunity to advance, enhance this diversity, promote global understanding by welcoming overseas students into our community. Last fall, we welcomed Felix San, a German-born Chinese teenager who shared the same birthday with my son into our home. Felix and his classmates made sure we understood the academic concept of gymnasium, their high school, indicates a very high level of achievement for German students, and that was fantastic peer support for my own son when they made sure he understood, for example, why he must stay in advanced math. The German students were much further ahead in mathematical skills than their American counterparts. We made sure Felix tried every fast-food restaurant, American food and Korean food, which is apparently hard to find in Germany, and heard a lot about his family in Shanghai."
Tara, sorry, that's time.
Is that okay?
But we did receive the email, so thank you very much.
I think that was submitted too.
Yes. Willa?
Hi, I'm Willa, and I'm one of also many who had the ability to host an exchange student. I'm not kidding when I say those two weeks that they were here were probably one of the most fun weeks, like two weeks I've ever had, which sounds like a lot, but it's true. And that doesn't just speak for me, but that speaks for many students of BHS, not only for the people that hosted, but also for fellow classmates and upperclassmen. I still share memories with like people that didn't host, and many who still are in contact with the other people that have come. And they all wish to see them again, and to wish to see that program continue in BHS. This program becoming an annual thing would be amazing, because it can start a chain of memories for many, and continue the experiences I had and that many other had, and I think that's really cool. And similar to what Josephine said, my exchange student is going to be my lifelong friend at this point, because we have so much in common, and I would love to continue on making memories with her.
Thank you, Willa. Dennis? You're, you can pass. No, I didn't think so.
Good evening, board members and parents of their children and their children as well. My name is Dennis Pavlock. I've been chairing an event here in the city of Beacon for the last 13 years, and it's reading the Declaration of Independence, and we're in our 13th year of doing it. We even read this document during COVID. The committee wanted to continue the tradition, so we read this during COVID. Nobody was in the audience, but we read this document during COVID. And I am here tonight to invite the entire Board of Education and new members that just got elected. Eric, and whoever I don't know on there, I don't know this lady. You're welcome to show up July 4th, 11 o'clock at City Hall in Beacon. We have a lot of entertaining, we have raffles this year, we're, we're, we're in our 13th year, but we're, so we're going to pretend like it's our 10th year. So Jody, Jody remembers, she was on City Council at the time, and we continue to do this. And so we have face, uh, face painters coming to do some face paint first year, we have raffles going on, we have other, other little gimmicks, and, and so I want yous to, hopefully the students can come and bring a entourage with yous, a showing of support, and hopefully some of the board members can, if not everybody, can show up on July 4th, 11 o'clock at City Hall in Beacon. And my second concern that I have is, I ride around a lot sometimes, and I, I went around to every school this weekend, and I looked at the backstops that we have. And I was here a few years ago, and nothing has changed regarding the one at Forstl down around the back by the basketball court. It's got shrubs coming out of it, and, you know, I'm not looking for a new backstop, but I'm looking for, you know, take the, take the limbs out of the way, clean it up a little bit, like you did the basketball court, make it a little bit more presentable, and, you know, I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering, I would like an answer why that's been neglected over the years. I would like to know, I would like to have an answer on that, why that was neglected over the years, and every other, every other school in this district has got a brand-new backstop or what a case may be. So I'd like an answer on that. If not tonight, when you see me next time, I'd like an answer, why that was neglected over the years. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dennis.
July 4th, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for the invitation. Stephen Mallon?
Hello, thank you so much for being here and receiving us. I am Stephen Mallon, I am Josephine's father. I want to just support this project as much as I possibly can. From a personal childhood experience, I still remember the German exchange student that I had when I was in fourth grade, fifth grade, and just the cultural experience of, you know, having someone that was felt from an absolutely different world has never left me. And I did end up marrying an Austrian, I don't know if that was related, but. I was really, really moved by the connection that was established on multiple families. My daughter was in tears when Paula was leaving. I mean, she did not want to let her go. It was such a wonderful thing to see. And I also saw a mom in absolute tears, not wanting to watch their exchange student leave. I have some wonderful photographs of you. So I just, I, the energy that was created, and the bridge that was established between these two communities, because of the school, because of the students, because of the families on both sides, I think is something that is really powerful, and I want to see that continuation somehow for more than just the kids that were able to experience it in this past year, because it was just an absolutely overwhelming experience, and I'm shaking now remembering it. So just, thank you so much, I hope this can continue for everyone, because it was, it's a magical experience.
Thank you very much. I apologize, is it Bonu?
Yeah, mine will be very short, so my daughter will be sophomore next year, and I, I think this program is, has no substitute for our family. Like, you know, if we don't have anything like that, there won't be such a possibility to expose to such a global experience. So that's all.
Thank you. Mira?
Hi, I'm going to be a sophomore next year, and, I mean, I'd really like to participate in this program. And my experience with not exchange programs, but connecting with an other culture is different specifically, because I moved here to America when I was eight. I was born in Turkey. I was born in Turkey, I was raised in Turkey, I was born in North Carolina. So I have some experience on what it could mean for someone to connect with a culture that isn't its own, and how it can expand your worldview so much. And when I first came here, Jen, one of the first, of course, they were like third graders, but one of the first things that struck me was how, even though they, everyone was so nice and great, I was still, sorry, I was still like very new to them. They were still, they still had a very closed-off worldview, so did I, and coming here made me like more open. And it, I think it made people who met me at the time also more open, because it was like a melding of cultures, not that much, but it was still impactful to me especially. So I think it would just be great for other people to experience, like, again, not the same thing at all, but it's a similar thing of meeting two different cultures, and I just think it's really cool. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Samiha, I put my name down separately, but we were going to do it together. I didn't have a lot of time to prepare, so I didn't write anything, but I think it's like a really cool experience, and what she was saying, like, so many people don't have the opportunity to go to another country aside from this, or, and especially in the US, like we have a very like, we're very close-minded, and we're not open to a lot of other cultures, and going to another country and meeting people from other countries can really like teach you a lot, and open up your experiences and worldview. And I just think it's a really cool experiences, experience, and other schools also have like year-long versions of this, and we don't have that, so I think we can at least have the two-week version, where we can like meet people who come here and go there for two weeks, and I'll also be a sophomore next year, and I hope to experience that. And also, I don't think it's just beneficial to the people who go on the, who like get to go to Germany or the host families, I think everybody benefits from it and getting to meet new people, and it was like a fun experience, and it was something that was like exciting. I didn't even really know any of them, but like it was exciting when they came, and an exciting thing at school, and I think also things that make school more exciting is something that should be, that people should put more effort into, because a lot of kids don't like want to always come to school, and so, yeah.
Thank you, and I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, thank you. Sarahlin?
Hi, I'm Sarahlin Jafar, and I was also a host on, for the exchange program. So I wanted to say, this year, students in Beacon were given the opportunity to be able to participate in a foreign exchange program from, with students from Germany. This is the first time that our school has ever done anything like this. And now we are under the assumption that the program may not continue. That being said, I want to talk about some things that might actually be beneficial for our school and the students in our school with continuing this program. So first off, our school does have a lot of limitation to foreign cultural, to exposure on foreign cultures. Being able to continue this program would create a new branch in our school for academic exchange. It would also not only help our school's reputation and outreach, but would create many new opportunities for students in our school to study abroad. And I know all of you know the most common reason people want to look to participate in this program, such as traveling to a new place, learning the language, or putting something on your resume. But there, but we all do have our own perspectives on this and other things that have to do with this program now that we've actually been a part of it. After hosting my exchange pro, partner, I have made an amazing friend, and like Josephine and Willa said, and probably like Annabelle thinks, we, these are lifelong friends, even though we've only really spent two weeks in person with them, it was so hard letting these people go. And just being able to stay in contact with them online, it's not the same. It also, during Lena's time here, you know, as the person I hosted, we shared so many cultural shocks that we just, we, we really didn't know that the cultures in the two areas could be so different, and it was really amazing to be able to learn that from another person. And I know that I'm really not the only one in this program who felt that way, I know most people in this program did feel this way, and that's one of the reasons we really want to keep it going. Another one is that a lot of my friends in our grade and in younger grades that I know have not been able to leave the country, be able to travel. And this not only gives them that opportunity, but also it's not just tourism, it's, you're really immersing yourself in the culture, instead of just seeing it from an outside perspective, we're going to school with these kids, it's amazing, it's not an experience that everyone's given. And also, as a person who, I've always had it in my sights to maybe study abroad for college and things like that, I never got the opportunity to learn how to adapt into a new culture. My parents are immigrants, but that's really the only sort of knowledge I have of how to immerse myself in a new culture, being able to, in, in 10th grade, being able to just put yourself in a new culture and learn how to adapt with people, and learn how to communicate with people from other cultures, and just be one of them, is so amazing, especially as someone who does plan on possibly going to college in a different country. So I already know a lot of people are doing this, are interested in doing this, this exchange next year, like Samiha and Mira have said, and like some parents have said, and probably are going to get messages that are going to say that too, I've talked to a lot of people about it. So being able to continue this program not only helps our school and its reputation, but it really helps the future of students and newer generations. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Juliet?
Hi, my name is Juliet Harvey, I also, along with my daughter, hosted a family, and it was a wonderful experience. There were some letters, I won't take the time to read it, because I think they were submitted, but Angelica from our sister school in Germany submitted a letter. Claudia Diaz's family, who hosted a student, her daughter Sophia had a, just a wonderful experience, and I think she wrote a letter, if it isn't submitted, I'll make sure that gets submitted. And the other letter I have is from Brandy Burr's family, hosted, and she submitted a letter. A couple of things that I just wanted to talk about was, the students that came here, as you heard, they, all are host families, had such a great time, but there was a lot of opportunity to reach out to more families in the district than just the host families, because a lot of our kids had after-school activities, and we needed to find something for those kids to do after school when our kids were involved in the after-school activities. And it would be great if we can continue this and be able to have a partnership where this can be an outreach to many, many more students than just the host families, because there could be sign-ups, and people could, you know, take an exchange student in the afternoon while some other family is busy with after-school activities. And there were really ways to reach out to pretty much the entire sophomore class, the more momentum we get with the program. So this isn't going to just affect the host families, but it can really affect the entire sophomore class, if we're able to build on the momentum. There were also ways for cost offsets for this trip that Kelly had set up, so that, like Sophia Diaz's family, many of us volunteered at West Point Concessions to help offset, offset the core, offset the cost. Some families ended up paying very, very little for this trip, so that they worked and volunteered to make that happen. Also, I think maybe the student representatives have reported to you that the ninth graders did have a meeting with Cory early in the year, and many of the ninth graders showed up, so just hoping that that feedback got back to you, that they were very interested in this continuing. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Dina?
This is a little intimidating.
Try being on this side.
I have a letter that Mike and I wrote, our family hosted a student, it was a pretty fantastic experience across the board. And I was a little trepidatious about the whole thing to begin with. I had a lot of questions. I was enthusiastic, but extremely trepidatious, and I just wanted to lead with that, because as a result, I feel extremely invested in the program. We would like to express our strong support for the continuation of our school's International Exchange Program for its second year. Despite facing many challenges during its inaugural, inaugural year, we firmly believe that this program holds immense value for our students, and has the potential to provide them with unique opportunities for growth and development and a lot of fun. While the participating families may not be aware of the intricacies of what it takes to run such a program, ending the program at this stage in its development feels wasteful for the efforts already put in and the opportunities it will spawn in the future. The benefits of an international exchange program cannot be overstated. Through interactions with students from a different culture and background, our students are exposed to new perspectives, ideas, and ways of life. This is not, this not only helps to broaden their understanding of the world, but also encourages them to become more open-minded, empathetic, independent, and adaptive, adaptable individuals. Furthermore, an international exchange program provides students with the opportunity to improve their language skills. This will serve them well, both academically and professionally in the future. We understand, again, that the first year of a program may not have been without its challenges, both logistical and financial, but we strongly believe that it would be a disservice to our students to cancel it after only one year. Instead, we urge the Board of Education to continue to support the program, and to work with program administrators and families to identify and address any issues that may have arisen during the development in its first year. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of this list, is there anyone else that would like to make a public comment? Okay, yeah, why don't we let the student first, Alana, and then you can come?
Hi, good evening. My name is Gabrielle Khalil, and I just wanted to come speak on this, because I just find it really important that like students in America can have like a more like worldly view of things, because, you know, generally, a lot of kids do not get, have, are not able to leave the country, they don't have that opportunity or privilege to see like the way other people live. And with this exchange program, with kids coming in from a place as far away as Germany, it really can expose them to new like thoughts and beliefs and ideas, instead of just relying on stereotypes they just see on TV, or just going on Google and looking at images. And they, like, there are a lot of like Americans who come from German descent, and who aren't able to go back, and this can help, also help them reconnect with their own culture while also sharing cultures. And I just think it's like really important that people are exposed to like different ways of life, instead of just thinking, this is, like, the way they live is just it, and that everyone like should be like this, and that there's many other different people out there. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Alana Reynolds, I didn't get to sign up, but I'm a parent, my daughter Willa already spoke. I just wanted to share a little anecdote about my dad. My dad is one of 12 kids, and growing up in Chicago, they could not travel anywhere. They could barely make it to church in one car. So what my grandparents did, because they had been, both been in, my grandfather was a bombardier in World War II, and had been all over the world, and my grandmother was a codebreaker in Washington DC, and like traveled all over, and had been to Paris and everything like that, they really wanted to expose their kids. So what they did was bring exchange students. They brought exchange students into their house almost every year. And they have people from Chile, people from Germany, France, they had a Norwegian woman, they, or girl, and I think, I lose track of all of them, but most of them are in touch with the family to this day. Many of them came to both the funerals for my grandparents. Like, it was an incredibly important experience for these 12 kids who couldn't travel, to have it come into their world. And I want to echo what Mira was saying, and I think Juliet brought up, and also the last person to speak, that what I witnessed was how interesting it was for the students that weren't in the program, and when the German students were at school here, and how exciting it was, just like Mira said, it was exciting, it was something new, it was like an injection of like, you know how it is when you have new students that are just from like fish kill, you have somebody from Germany, and you're like, oh my God. And I really watched that, I really saw it, I saw like what a buzz there was, and how interested everybody was in these exchange students, and like Juliet was saying, there was a lot of cross- And like Juliette was saying, there was a lot of cross-pollination, um, because of the after-school stuff. But even when they went to the after-school stuff, they went to, um, a soccer game, you know, one of the final games they went to. You know, they were really, really into it. And, uh, I just want to put that out there, that it's not just the kids who participate directly in the program that benefit. It's the whole school and outside of the school, even in, like, the younger siblings who get to talk about it and get to live with somebody. Um, and I'm not sure how the program is going to be structured going forward, but the original idea was that you could host a family and not travel. If you, if for some reason you couldn't travel, you could do just the hosting part. And I'm not sure, you know, if it goes forward, what the structure will actually be. But that's really important for families who, for whatever reason, can't let their child go or don't want to let their child go abroad, for whatever reason, that they could bring someone into their house and, you know, in a way that they feel, um, comfortable. Um, and so the last thing I'll say is that I know that I'm preaching to the choir here. I know that everybody on this board agrees with probably what everybody has said so far. And I think there's a lot of common ground. And I think for whatever reason, whatever the hurdles that have to be overcome, I think, um, we can all work together to do that. There's just so much goodwill. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. Um, thank you all so much for everything that you're doing and for all of the amazing opportunities that you're helping create and maintain for our students. I truly, truly appreciate it. Um, I want to add to what everybody has been saying, this program, I, like Dina, was very hesitant to do this. I thought, there's a million other things going on and this is a huge undertaking right now and, you know, it's not the right, like, I had a whole bunch of things in my head. My daughter really wanted to do it and submitted the paperwork behind my back. Next thing I know, I get paired with an exchange student. Okay, we're doing this. And as Steve so sweetly shared with everybody, yes, I was bawling like a baby when she left because I loved this girl. Um, she was amazing. My, my 12-year-old sixth grader, who absolutely did not want another girl in the house, was like, in fact, like, no, we are absolutely not doing this, had a great time. They connected so well. They learned so much from each other. They've been texting each other since she left. We've been texting each other since she left. It was just a tremendously wonderful thing for my family. And like everybody else has said, for the other children as well, they, they came to Beacon Players events and to the show that they did. They came to other things. There were, all of the other friends of the kids that had exchange students hung out with them and they all got to know each other. And I feel like it was a very enriching experience for everybody involved and, and it was just so much better than I ever expected it to be. And so I'm really hoping that this continues. I'm really hoping that other kids have the opportunity. Um, I don't know if it has to be Germany. I don't know if it has to be the same. But something like this is, is just such a wonderful opportunity for these kids and I would hate to see us go backwards on this. And I also just want to add that Dennis's Fourth of July thing is always so much fun. My kids want a huge jar of gumballs. You guys should go to it. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment?
Hello, my name's Kimberly. Um, my daughter is Holly and we participated in the foreign exchange program. And again, just to add to that, I think it has a huge, um, opportunity for the, the biggest bang for your buck. I look at it as a lot of the decisions that the district makes is all based on money, right? I mean, you have to have the money to fund these programs. And I look at it as this was four weeks of an experience for these kids. They got two weeks here. They'll get two weeks over there. That's four weeks. And I spent something very similar for a free, for a three-day trip for the eighth graders. So I think that just from a financial impact, they get a four-week experience for the price that typically another, um, opportunity, you know, maybe two or three days. So I think financially, it's a huge opportunity, a big bang for your buck with regards to exposing these kids to an incredible opportunity. And I know this year it was small, but it has a potential every year to just get bigger and bigger. Because again, being the first year, I think our kids were the risk-takers and the ones that committed. And I think that once they saw what it was like, there were tons of people that regretted not participating and losing out on that opportunity. So I just feel like it's gonna grow and grow every year. And, and I agree that it affected not only the individual kids that were in the program, but their friends. I mean, the friends groups of all these kids were exposed to this exchange program and they all got to benefit. And I can't even imagine how big of a potential it will be year after year. And you can't deny the fact that we're in a great location. I mean, from a foreign country wanting to come here, I mean, we're close to New York City. We've got, you know, diversity in our community. It's just a great opportunity that we're providing these kids coming over to, I mean, who doesn't want to go to New York City? It's probably one of the top destinations and we're close to providing that in regards to the atmosphere and just Beacon, I think, is a great community to, to offer. So I just hope the board considers, you know, keeping this program alive so future, future kids can participate and have the same experiences. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, sure.
Oh, there was one more student, I think, Matt, sorry.
Hi, I'm Julia. Uh, I actually had the opportunity to go to Germany in September. Um, I went with my family. Um, my dad is actually from there and came here 14, actually 15 years ago. Um, I have a lot of family there and I got to experience what it would be like if I was living there since, like, I got to see my grandmother and all these people and I loved it so much. And my dad actually has a lot of friends with kids my age and they get to speak, they know English really well. So I got to, uh, learn about what it's like to go to school there. They don't have a typical high school. It's more of like a trade school. I would really like to experience or have other people experience, to hear the stories about what it would be like to go to a trade school instead of a high school since they don't have experience like prom or football games or stuff like that. It's very, um, cool to me or, like, interesting to learn about because I got to have tea with her and she was the best and I would really like to hear these stories. And I feel like it's so beneficial for them to be able to see movies and stuff and actually be able to experience what it's like to come to an actual high school. Um, because obviously it's not like a Disney movie, like, high school's not really that experience. But it's just very, um, eye-opening and very, um, fascinating to hear what their, um, perception is about high school. Um, she was talking, she was asking me all of these questions about how it would be like to be here and stuff like that. And I just, I thought it was so cool and I thought that I would, uh, share it. I also have so many stories now just from that experience alone, going there, being able to see all of the history and meet so many new people. I just feel like it would be a really good addition to, um, kids to learn about. So that's all.
Thank you.
Hi. So, um, an exchange student stayed in my house and...
Do you mind just saying your name?
Anna. She was...
Your name?
Oh, my name, sorry. I'm Paige MacRido. Um, so basically, when she came, she, like, had this whole different perception of America. And she was literally amazed to see our school buses because, I don't know, they don't have that in Germany. And, and like, when she came, it was just like, like, she didn't know anything about America because, like, her family doesn't really watch TV. And, um, and so, like, I had to, like, show her, I was like, it was cool because, like, I got to, like, be her tour guide around Beacon and just show her everything about America because she was literally completely clueless and her accent was, like, crazy. But like, over time, um, she really got better at her English. And I feel like she, because she texts me all the time still. And it's cool because it's like having another best friend because, like, I was with her 24/7 for two weeks straight, which, like, is a long time to be with someone. So you get to talk a lot. And I've never, I've never gone, like, outside of America. And the fact that I even get to go to, like, Europe is crazy. And I did submit the papers behind my mom's back because I really, really wanted to go. And I know that, like, I don't know, as soon as I saw the opportunity, I wanted to, like, just take it because, like, who knows if you're ever gonna get to, like, experience something like this again. And I feel like everyone that has this chance should take it because it's really crazy. And so we should open that to more people.
Thank you so much, Paige. So, um, Matt, if you have some comments? Uh, one, one question that maybe you can answer for me. I'm not, I don't think anyone on the board is quite clear on what the ask of the board is. This has never been presented to the board formally. Um, it was sort of self-funded through the PTA, as far as I understand it, and a small donation from DocuWare. Um, so I'm not totally clear on what we're being asked.
Would you like me to answer any questions?
Nope. I, well, unless you're leading the program, I'd like our superintendent to.
Sure, of course.
First, I just want to say thank you to everybody for being here tonight. Our meetings have been sort of short and quiet for a while, so it's, it's good to have a lot of public comment. I want to also say thank you, um, to the students especially. This isn't, um, this isn't the easiest room to speak in, so I appreciate you coming and stepping up to the microphone. Uh, it's, 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 uh, it's not the easiest thing in the world, as our student advisors to the board can attest, right? You've gotten used to that over time. Uh, so I want to just, uh, I'll take a minute or two to just, um, talk about a few things that were brought up. And I'll answer your question. So one of the things that we are, um, we've been really trying to, um, slowly kind of start to roll out, and I think over the next few years, uh, our goal is that we see a lot more of this, is, uh, what we're, we've been sort of calling internally and we're gonna be doing some publicizing about this, um, at the end of this year, over the summer and, and early next year, is creating some signature experiences for all of our students at different grades. Um, so I think, you know, some of the students that spoke tonight, uh, you were very eloquent about, um, this being an opportunity to, to go to another country. So one of the things that we are balancing on our end is, uh, we have many students, um, who reach fairly far, um, into their years in our district who have never been to New York City and have lived here their whole life. Uh, we have many students that have never stepped foot on a college campus, um, until pretty late into their years here in the district. So these are things, um, these are things that also concern us and that we want to try, uh, as a district to start addressing over time. I'm a parent of a fifth grader. We just, uh, you know, we just had the Sharp experience. I was sort of pressed into duty very much at the last minute to be a evening chaperone, so I really got to experience the whole thing. And, you know, like, everybody else knows, it's, it's, uh, it's amazing. I take no credit for Sharp. It's been around. One of the chaperones had done it 35 years ago when he was in fifth grade, you know, so it's a, it's a longstanding thing. But one of the amazing things about it is, uh, the teachers really work hard. Teachers and everybody else work really hard to provide sort of, uh, entry points for all students. Most of the students stay overnight. Some don't. Uh, some get picked up at five, some get picked up at three, some get picked up at nine o'clock. Uh, but there's a commitment to all the students, uh, participating. We're trying to take something like that. We're trying to find ways that, like, across the elementary grades and into roundabout and even the high school where it gets more challenging, uh, to provide some what we're, you know, what we're calling signature experiences so that every student has the opportunity to try, um, to experience something. So like, the 11th grade this year, instead of, like, the AP class, um, the AP history class visiting Ellis Island, it was, all the 11th graders had the opportunity to, uh, to visit Ellis Island. And Anne Marie or Cory, correct me if I'm wrong, we, I think the district paid for that trip? Paid for most of it? So, uh, so, so that sort of gets me to the first thing is, like, the funding or cost or, or whatever. So the funding piece, our commitment, uh, as a district is, we're gonna put, um, our money in trying to fund either a large portion or all of these signature experiences at these grades. And that's gonna take up an enormous amount of resources to do. We have this ability with some of this federal funding, which, you know, only has a year or so left. And at Shell Life, we're using some of that to get us started in this or to, um, offset some of the costs. But our goal over the next few years is to budget things. So we can have, like, at the, uh, at the high school, we can have kids visiting, um, um, college campuses for the first time, New York City for the first time. Hopefully, as we grow this, it's not the first time at high school that people are visiting New York City, that it's happening in the elementary school or at, uh, at the middle school. But we want to create things that we're either funding or offsetting the costs that allows access to all or most of our students. Um, so in terms of a funding thing, um, the way we're looking at it, and I think, I think this is a fairly standard approach. Um, when we're looking at using district funds for, for a field experience, we have to either pay for everybody to go or we've got to offset the cost for everybody to go. Um, there's, there's, uh, exceptions to that. Uh, we have three kids in track and field that are going to states. Like, you know, like, we have kids in NISMIA who go to states. Like, we have individual students who sometimes need district, uh, support to travel. That's obviously an exception to what I just said. But beyond that, our funds are gonna be going to either pay the whole way, like we do for Sharp, or offset the costs that we do. And someone brought up the Washington DC trip. We're trying to find ways to offset. It would be a really huge cost, you know, that we can't afford to, for the district to pay for every eighth grader to go. So we're trying to find ways, uh, to offset costs, to partner with, um, you know, local businesses and whatnot, to provide scholarships, et cetera. So the cost part, district funds are gonna go to field trips that impact all or most of the kids at certain grades. The, um, i- in terms of some other questions I've had about the program, I, I, I didn't get to have, like, an international experience. I may have shared this at a board meeting at some point, so I'll be brief. Well, it wasn't until college. And I was essentially a scholarship student at college and so the financial aid slash scholarship package I had paid for me to go, uh, to go to Europe, which was kind of incredible. Uh, but that was my first experience and I agree with the kids speaking. It's an incredible, life-changing thing. Um, so we also see the need, and when this came up and the interest in it, like, we need to start, um, offering opportunities for students to have international experiences. So, uh, so this year, Karen DeCandia, uh, has tried, uh, tried to see student interest in the trip to Costa Rica. Um, by all accounts, there's a really large student interest in that. I totally get, it's a different thing. It's not an exchange. It's, it's visiting, so I completely understand that. Uh, it's a different sort of, uh, it's a different sort of program. But, but, um, based at least on interest now, we have a lot of students interested in that. So, uh, so with this, uh, I think in terms of if there's, if there's thoughts out there that I'm trying to stand in the way of the program, I think the only question I asked, and it was just a few days ago, is should we wait until our students have actually gone, um, in a few weeks and had the experience to then start planning, you know, next steps? That could just be the administrator in me that sort of, like, wants to see something happen and then build from that. But that was just the only question I asked in terms of it continuing. Um, I, I personally, you know, will not stand in the way of this program moving forward at all. Um, I do think, based on a couple of things that I'll address in a second, that it will have to have, like, a apparent, um, organization component to it. Just, uh, just for one, um, uh, for one, back to the cost thing. Like, we're, I explained that the field trips we are gonna be funding. But two, um, and I've, I've talked with Kelly about this, uh, a lot over the last year. German isn't a language that we teach. So I completely get what everybody's saying. They had amazing experiences with the students. Um, but one of the things Jody said was, we're, we're also sort of looking at this and we're trying to be open to, are there other experiences for us beyond just like a study tour, like the Costa Rica trip? Are there other exchange programs, um, that exist out there that would allow students to practice Spanish and/or Italian? Are there other exchange programs that exist out there that would allow students to practice Spanish and/or Italian? And so we're trying to investigate those. But we're not in a place to be able to offer that next year, the Costa Rica thing is it. But if we did have one of those exchanges and if we did have it with Spanish or Italian, we wouldn't be funding students to go on that because it would just be a certain number of students going. We're not funding students to go on the Costa Rica trip. We're going to try to help some students get scholarships or fundraise for it. But we're not funding students to go on the Costa Rica trip. That's something that people are taking that cost on themselves. So I think just one of my other sort of thoughts about it is, is some, some very direct questions that have come to me about the program. When are we, when are we going to start teaching German in the district? So, so this obviously was a very grassroots thing. And I really tip my cap, Kelly, especially to you, for putting so much time into making it happen. But it wasn't part of district planning in terms of offering another language. Offering languages and staffing languages are probably one of the most difficult things. School districts, I want to say in New York, but it's probably beyond New York face, just in terms of finding qualified, certified teachers to teach these languages. We have significant issues staffing the two languages we teach right now. One of the reasons why we do, why we brought in Italian as a second language was it's more common for a teacher to, to be duly certified in Spanish and Italian because of the similarities in the languages. And now we have two duly certified teachers, so we feel confident to be able to grow that program. But our plan has not been to also begin like a German language program, which would include funding probably one or two more teachers beyond the teachers that we're funding for this. I share all this simply because, you know, I, you know, it's the not fun part of my job, but I have to think about some of the complexities regarding some of these things. And so, so I or the district is not going to stand in the way of this continuing. It's going to have to be run, it's going to be, have to be run since we don't have a German program and a German teacher. I see it as something that will continue to be run on a more volunteer basis. I'm perfectly willing to assist. I know Mr. Dwyer can too. It's something that we can't fund individual students to go to Germany using district funds, but we will be using our funds the way I laid out and trying to increase experiences for all of our students. It's also something that we do not have plans right now to create a German language program because of this experience. I want to be clear about that. I want to take this opportunity to be clear about that while everybody's here. That said, I really hear you loud and clear, especially the students, like you had an amazing experience with these kids coming. And I think you're, you know, because you know the students who came and you have these good relationships, I think, excuse me, you're going to have a good, a good experience when you go in a few weeks. So we're going to try to do things like Costa Rica too, just in terms of offering it. We also will try to see if there's exchange programs in either Spanish or Italian because it will reinforce languages that we teach. But I don't see a reason, we're not like stopping this. I simply asked Kelly just the other day, would we want to be starting year two when we haven't finished year one? That was the only question I asked about that. So those are just my thoughts, kind of off the top of my head. I, I, I got one of the emails like a few hours ago, so I was able to pull some thoughts together. But those are just some thoughts that we've kind of been working on or operating on for the last year, really.
And Matt, do you mind just talking a little bit about how we created the Second World Language? What that process was, just so that people understand the complications that, you know?
We, five years ago, we wrote a grant. And part of the grant was to start a fourth grade instrumental music program. That's not while we're all here, but that has moved beyond the grant-funded stage and happens every year now. The other part of the grant was to start a Second World Language. We thought it would be cool to try to do Mandarin Chinese. The grant got accepted. We had, you know, an absolute near impossible task of trying to hire a teacher to do that. We couldn't find a teacher. So we, and the grant money was only for a year. We shifted the grant money over to, to try to, to get the Italian program going. We had a teacher at the time that was duly certified, Maria Kalaf. I think I'm saying her name, last name correctly, but, and now we have two teachers duly certified. We have another teacher at Rambout who's duly, Erica Hughes is duly certified in Spanish and Italian. But that began with a grant. It also began then with being able to staff it. And staffing a language program is probably the most difficult thing. We have two world language openings right now. One at the high school, one in Rambout. And probably if you ask Mr. Dwyer back there, I'm not going to put him on the spot. The thing he's sweating about the most as we head into the summer is, is hiring that person. Mr. Soltis is probably thinking the same thing for Rambout. It's probably one of the most difficult things to hire. So I don't know if that answers what you're getting at.
I thought the other aspect of that was Mandarin was identified through a district-wide survey of stakeholders. And that was the world, it was at a world language and most people had written in Mandarin.
Right, right, it was, sorry.
Yeah, and I think just the, the fact that, you know, it, it takes several years. It's taken five years to staff it for all the eligible students. That it's not, you know, it's not something that we just in a year created the Second World Language.
From an administrative, this is not a comment on the teachers who are amazing. From an administrative standpoint, trying to do two languages has been a bit on life support for us for the last few years. Just to be blunt, we feel with the addition of two teachers who, who are duly certified, I think we feel like we can do it in a more robust way and do it sort of grade seven through 12. But it is extremely difficult. And I, I'm just sort of addressing things that have kind of come up to me because I've, I've had different public forums where people will just ask me like, when are we starting German? And, and that's not, that's, you know, you know, so I'm half German way back. Like I have family in Germany too. Like I'm not like against German or anything, but like we don't have any plans to start the German language. I know no one's asked for that here, and I totally get that everyone is asking for this exchange program to continue. I, I want to take the opportunity to be clear about that because I think it's, I don't know if it's confused people or people just assume since this has happened that we're starting a German language program. So I'm sorry for the long-winded speech. I don't have a four-minute limit. I probably should. But like we are very, very committed, just to go back to where I started, we're very committed with creating these signature experiences again. And it is not to take away from the power of what you've all shared. But again, we've had, we've had, we have students who haven't been into parts of New York City. We have students who haven't been on college campuses. We haven't had, we have students who haven't seen like a 21st century workplace environment. We want to get our students seeing those. We want to be able to fund that where it's no cost to them or low cost. We want to take things like the DC trip that was brought up, and we want to try to find ways to make that lower cost. It's too expensive for us to pay the whole way. I know the folks at Rambout are toying with some different trip ideas too. We want to try to keep those sustainable as well. But, you know, that's kind of where we are with all of it. The Costa Rica thing right now has, I think, around 50 people interested. That number probably will decrease. The Costa Rica thing in full transparency is a lot more expensive than the German thing. Like I completely get all that. We weren't offering it to say, like, here's a replacement for it. We were offering it partly because Karen's been wanting to do it for years. COVID sort of put a pause on it. But we also knew just from the interest in the German thing that there's, we're not tapping into something here in the district. And so we want to do more of this as well. And I'm sorry to pick on you, Jody, but like we, we do really, I don't know if they're there for us, but we do want to see if there's exchange programs for, with Spanish-speaking countries or, or Italian, just because that is a language that we teach. And so that, we may not be able to find that or pull it off, but that's another thing we're looking into too. So, sorry for the long window.
And board members may have comments of their own. I would ask that you wait until board comments, if that's okay. And the, you know, members of the public are welcome to wait to hear that if they want. So with that said, I'm going to move on to our workshop. We have an instructional update tonight from Segreiro Rudesindo O'Neil about a pilot program math.
And I also do not have a four-minute limit, so.
Right. Let's get started.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you again for the opportunity to share tonight. So tonight, I just wanted to go over a kindergarten to second grade math resource that we're looking into acquiring. So as we know, just to put a little context into why we kind of were here tonight. So we know that one of the effects of COVID is that it really impacted our students' academic proficiency, but specifically in math. And that's not a beacon thing, it is a countrywide thing. So one of the reasons why a lot of the research is saying that math was so deeply impacted is the fact that unlike literacy, math is not something that's supported at home the way literacy is. You know, you read to your children when they go to bed, even if you're a non-reader, you do a lot of oral storytelling. So that's something that's kind of ingrained in the family unit. You're not really teaching algebra at the, well, maybe some people are. But for most people, where they're not doing algebra, they're not doing that kind of problem solving. So, which is why, one of the reasons why math, which has to be explicitly taught, has really been impacted. So one of the things that I wanted to share as well is what the research has said is the most effective way to actually teach mathematics. So there are nine components that research has said, and this has come from the National Councils of Teachers of Mathematics. And one of the reasons why I wanted to tap into this research is because this is what they do. This has been gathered by individuals from all over the country that teach explicitly math K through 12. So one of the things that they talk about is demonstrating the acceptance of students' divergent ideas. And what does that mean? Is that we, that part of teaching mathematics is letting students explore. Letting students kind of come up with ideas as to how math works. And a lot of times, traditional math programs, particularly ones that we were, when we were younger, so I'm going to age myself a little bit. I remember having to memorize for Rote the times tables with a little song, but not really understanding that multiplication was kind of like a fast way to add. I didn't understand really the relationship between multiplication and, and fractions because, and division, because everything was memorization, memorization, memorization. So of course, when we get, we got to more complex things, I really couldn't put it together. So when I saw problems that were presented in a way that was a little bit differently, I really, really struggled in being able to solve them. And then we talk about, in terms of research, influence learned by posing challenging and interesting questions. So one of the things in mathematics that they talk about in terms of good practices is allowing students to be able to actually ask questions and dissect problem solving. So not just memorizing, not just kind of going through the motions, but really being able to ask questions. Why, why are two plus two four? Like what is it that makes it? What is the relationship? Being able to really decompose numbers and put them back together. And then it talks about having a positive attitude to, about mathematics and students kind of having that can-do attitude about math. Now, as we know, traditionally, we do see a lot of gender disparities in math and sciences. So we see that people, certain particular genders have been turned off by mathematics. And then we see that in math and science, we're lacking certain groups of people, not just gender, but also historically minoritized students have been dissuaded from mathematics, not really given the access and the opportunity. So we believe that mathematics is something that it's a right as well. Just like reading is a constitutional right, understanding math is a constitutional right. That everyone has a right to know math, to enjoy math, and to be able to understand math because we do need it in the world. So then we go on to the next three. Students are actively engaged in doing math. So this is going beyond just doing a worksheet. This is students actually working on mathematical problem solving, not just coming up with the answer and handing it in. So what good research is talking about is students really being engaged where they're using manipulatives, where they're talking out problems, and that leads to students solving challenging problems. So making sure that they're still rigor within the mathematical problems. And you do that by scaffolding. So it doesn't mean that you give them an easier problem. It means that you, that you break it apart into smaller units so then they're able to handle that more complex concept. So you still have the rigor and the high expectations. And then interdisciplinary connections and examples to teach mathematics. So a good mathematical program, particularly in K-2, incorporates stories. So being able to still incorporate literacy, being able to still connect it to science. So we know that math and science are intimately connected and students being able to see that. So they're not seeing math as this isolated thing that they only do during this one period in the day. They're able to see math in everyday life. And then students sharing their mathematical ideas and working in pairs and groups. So while it is important that students get an opportunity to work independently, it's even more important than they work in groups. Before they ever get to that independent practice, being able, research has shown that when students are able to talk about it with friends and with peers in groups, that they're able to internalize the concepts. So this is going beyond teaching arithmetic, it's about teaching conceptual knowledge and providing students opportunities to communicate mathematically, so accountable talk. In the same way that we teach in reading, we give students opportunities to talk about what they're learning, we have to give students opportunities to talk about what they're learning in math, particularly when they're making errors. Being able to dissect, okay, this didn't go the way I thought it was going to go. What exactly happened? Let's talk about that. You know, so then students understand what is it that they actually don't know and being able to pinpoint it that. At the end of the day, if I'm a student and I do two plus two and I say three and it's just circled and that's the, that's the incorrect answer, it doesn't tell me why I got it wrong. You know, so we want to be able to engage students in that. And then, of course, the most important thing is using manipulatives, which is really the first thing that we want to do when we're teaching students math. So we want students to be able to go to the, start with the concrete and eventually end up in the abstract, which is the algorithm. Which leads us to our current problem. So right now, we are using Eureka. And one of the things that I've been hearing for the last two years, particularly for my K-2 teachers, not really my three, five teachers, but my K-2 teachers have talked about how, one, the lessons are really long. What they suggest, the time that they're suggesting the lessons should take, which is around 50 minutes, is actually taking 60 to 70 minutes, which is not really developmentally appropriate for kindergarten to second grade. Then one of the things that we, when we looked at the program is that there aren't enough opportunities for students to engage in that concrete learning before they get to the abstract. So it kind of goes so quickly into the abstract that students are missing those entry points to really internalize the concepts. Again, moving away from arithmetic and really going into those deep concepts. And then, of course, we want math to be relevant. And in order for them to be relevant is that the lessons have to actually have that real-life connection, that engagement. This is why it's important in life. This is the why you're learning it. I know unfortunately, I, I struggled with math because I never understood the why. I didn't understand geometry until I actually bought a house and I had to buy curtains. And I had to buy, do, buy carpeting. And I realized, gee, I'm doing area. I wish I would have known that, I would have paid more attention. So having students understand that. And then, of course, kind of going back to the accountable talk. And the reason I emphasize a lot of accountable talk is because, remember, K-2 is, is the years that where students are learning process. And that is so important because when they are able to understand the process of learning and the process of the different subjects, then when they get into the deep content that starts in third grade, they have a solid foundation. And what we're seeing is that a lot of our students are losing time in the process. And part of that process, if you think about even our students who are coming in, who are linguistically different, our students who need more, who have learning preferences, we're not giving them enough of those opportunities to understand that. So speaking of process, so this actually started prior to me, which is why when I came in, some teachers immediately started emailing me. So my predecessors did have, start having, started conversations prior to COVID around looking at math programs. So because there was so much feedback from teachers the past two years, particularly K-2, again, not really three, four, but K-2, about ways that we can support our students because we don't want them to then, when they get to the upper grades, really, really struggle, we wanted to revisit that discussion. So we met with content coordinators. The content coordinators kind of shared, again, what I just shared with you, what their concerns were with the program that they had. So we were able to kind of contact some, some different companies to be able to send some materials. Some of the materials were sent digitally, others came actually in boxes. They were sent to the schools where every K-2 teacher had an opportunity to look at it. That was facilitated by the content coordinators because my thing was, you're the ones doing the program. I need you to look at it. There were certain caveats, though. One of the thing was that we needed to really make sure that the materials were linked to the new standards. They cannot be based on common core. It had to be. They could not be based on Common Core, it had to be linked to the new standards. So we needed to also make sure that the materials that were coming in, that we were going to use, still had that same amount of rigor that was required in order for our students to understand and know the standards. And we also wanted to make sure that it was developmentally appropriate. So at the end, what the teachers were really excited about was Ready Math. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that. So the three programs that this year we really looked at was McGraw-Hill H-Math. Eureka, which is a program that we are currently using, did send materials that they said had been retooled to be a little bit more age-appropriate in K-2. So we wanted to look at it, because we're already ordering Eureka program. So we wanted to see how they kind of changed the program. And then the Ready Math. The teachers wanted to see the Ready Math, because we use iReady. We use the supplemental component of iReady, so it's not our curriculum. It's a supplemental component. One of the things that they were noticing in the teacher toolbox was the toolbox reference of the Ready Math, like workbooks to blah, blah, blah. So some of them felt that with the program, if students needed extra help, it was an easy alignment, because they already kind of had, it was already talking to each other. Now, programs that I was told have been looked at prior to me coming here, WasInVision was looked at before COVID, GoMath and Investigations, and it was something that they felt they did not like. So the way that we did the comparison of the program, I did go on to Ed Reports, and Ed Reports is actually an independent company that looks at all instructional programs in all different subjects. So they're completely objective, they're not selling anything, and they kind of rate it. And they rate it based on three criterias. Focus and coherence, based on the standards, the rigor of mathematical practices, and of course, most important, usability. Because if teachers aren't able to understand how to implement the program, implementation is key. If the teacher can't implement the program, it's going to fail. So when we looked at this particular program, one of the things that we did like was that the focus and the coherence got the tops, got a very good score. The rigor was there, so it was definitely aligned to the standards. The usability was 836 out of 38, so there was possibilities there. When we looked at Eureka, Eureka, again, we do like the rigor of Eureka, which is why 3 through 5 is staying with Eureka. The rigor, again, was there, but the usability, kind of like we had talked about, what we noticed was, there weren't a lot of changes to what they claimed they said they changed. One of the biggest things that teachers complained about, they had to spend a lot of time really redoing lessons, modifying lessons, making even spaces that were developmentally appropriate for students to actually write their answers in, because they weren't giving them enough space. And as we know, in K-2, our little ones are still, you know, learning how to grip a pencil. They're still learning how to write between, inside the lines. And this program kind of made it very difficult to do that. So then when we looked at Ready Math, one of the biggest thing was, just like the other two programs, you know, same focus and coherence, definitely the same rigor, but it was the program that came in with the greatest usability. So which is easy to implement. And again, there's also that caveat of, we still have our contract with Eureka, so we can always go back to Eureka. And we still have Eureka materials available in the district, because there is an abundance. So there's still, we're still able to use both if we need to, particularly if we have students that need extension activities, those students that are really graded math and maybe don't need as much time as the other students. We want to make sure that we're still challenging them. So I wanted to show you what the structure of the Eureka math program is. So if you look and kind of going back to what the research was saying, what I had shared with you before. So there is three parts. We have the fluency practice, the concept development, and then the student debrief. The fluency practice is, what happens during this time is that teachers are doing review, and they're sometimes doing drills. And if you notice, this is very teacher-directed. So 17 minutes, which actually goes against research. Research says that in K-2, students should not be still for more than 10 minutes, 10 to 15 minutes, because their brains just can't absorb all of that. So 17 minutes of this program is spent on doing a lot of fluency, or doing practice, or doing review, or doing drills. And then they spend 25 minutes in the concept development. So this is where the teacher is introducing the new concept for the day. The teacher does the modeling, the teacher does the guiding, the teacher does the teaching. Again, the students are spending a lot of seat time during this time, 25 minutes. And then, when they finally can be very, very engaged and have that accountable talk, it's for eight minutes. Now, what the feedback that I've been getting is, is that a typical lesson is not 50 minutes. It's taking 60 to 70 minutes. And what that is doing is, it is not allowing teachers to give students opportunities for centers and opportunities to really use those manipulatives so they're really able to understand the concrete to then go to the abstract. So when we look at Ready Math, the average lesson is about 45 minutes. One of the biggest things that the teachers reported back was that the way the activities were laid out, they believed that they were going to be able to incorporate centers into those lessons, because they're not as long. The way the problem talk about it is, in this particular component, they're doing review, but they're also introducing the concept. So it's not spending the entire time with students at a seat. So it kind of follows the model of, I do, we do, you do. And then they have the hands-on activity, where they're practicing the new concept that's been given to them. And then 15 minutes of the problem solving connection is them working either in groups or working independently. So if it's the first time that they're introducing a concept, they're going to be working in groups so that they have support. If there's the next day where they're reinforcing the concept, it may be independent practice. And then, of course, then they're going to review at the end. So if you notice, there is more time of student active engagement, there is more accountable talk going on in this particular format. So I wanted to kind of give you an example of, this is actually a geometry lesson from Unit 2 in kindergarten. So our current program, so in this introductory lesson, the teacher would be introducing to the students flat geometrical shapes as well as challenging them with some solid shapes. Because you'll see there, there's a cone in there. Now, the Ready Math lesson is doing the same thing. So the goal of these two lessons are the exact same thing. But if you notice, in the Eureka practice page, there are 15 shapes that the students have to identify. Some of them are also shapes that we wouldn't really do or dive into till first grade. On the math-ready side, the Ready Math side, they're only showing them eight. It's very clearly defined which are solid and which are flat shapes. So in terms of, again, the spatial awareness of K-2 students, this is a lot easier for them to be able to navigate. The same thing is, we kind of go back to best practices, always wanting to make sure that lessons are relevant and connected to real life. So if you look at the Eureka page, the expectation for both these activities are exactly the same. They have to be able to take a geometric shape and kind of align it or identify it with something in real life. So if I look at the circle and I look at the clock, I'm like, well, that's something that I see in real life. Now, keep in mind that these clocks, these analog clocks, our students are only seeing in the classroom. They really don't have these at home anymore. You know, so they're not seeing them out in the real world. And some of our more modern classrooms don't even have these clocks anymore, that we have kind of like replicas for our students. And then you see a flag, and then you see this sign that, I think it's like slippery when wet, which is a very abstract road sign that I really don't think our students are really paying attention to. On the contrast, you look at the Ready Math sheet, which is very, very colorful, it's actually showing a scene in the real world where the students have to identify the shapes that they would see in the real world. The sun, the windows, the shapes of the windows in the taxis. You know, it's a student carrying a box, which is in a cube shape. So those things that make it a little bit more relevant to our students and easier for them to remember. Any questions? Question?
Yeah. So it looks like you're going to the Ready Math. What other districts use it?
I don't know of any other districts that are using it in Dutchess County. I know that in Orange County, there's a couple of districts that are using it, and they like it. They've actually bought the whole program. They liked the fact that it was an actual workbook. They liked the fact that you could actually go all the way up to eighth grade. I don't think that's something that Beacon should do. I don't agree with the whole K-8. I think secondary is a little bit different. So I know some schools in Newburgh, because Newburgh, they don't have a unified, some of the schools have used the K-2. And they like it. Again, they like the fact that they're able to give supplemental support through iReady, which is already there. And they like the fact that the students are getting center time.
So Duberg uses it, and who else? Do you know?
That's the district that I spoke to, so I have it.
Do you know the success rate of the program? Like how the students are performing after? Because it's given them the foundational skills and how they're doing in grade, and it threw three state tests afterwards?
Well, I know what the success rate is of using the iReady program with the prescription. And their research has shown that students have improved. Now, in terms of this particular program, keeping in mind that we're doing this to kind of respond to the pandemic. So there really isn't any research right now that's talking about how these programs are working post-COVID. That's all still in research development. And that's going to take about three to five years to get good research from that. Because as we know, when you're implementing a program, it takes three to five years for you to see the results of the program.
So is this going to be your supplementary math program? Or is it going to be your base?
It's going to, right now, be a resource that we're going to be using. They still have Eureka available.
What's going to be?
But the teachers really want to use this because they feel that they're going to be able to better teach and implement math using this program.
So your curriculum maps are going to have both resources? And it's going to be a teacher option as to which one they want to use, or?
Well, the teachers are really committed to using this to see how, now, again, the Eureka is available if there are students. Again, we have some students that are very good in math. Some students that, as we know, need to be challenged. And I think it's important that we have supplemental resources for them as well, so that we keep them challenged. And I think that a student who has, who takes very quickly to these concepts, I think this they will be bored with. And I think it's important that we keep that rigor up for them.
Okay, thank you.
If that makes sense, yeah.
In terms of the transition, then, from second to third grade and going, I guess, back into the Eureka program, do you see any issues with that?
No, I actually looked at both. Because there, when you get to second grade, it's very, very rigorous. There isn't the difference between the second grade, really, K-2, and the actual Eureka, is that they're giving the kids less and they're actually going deeper. So this is going to give our students more of an opportunity to really, really learn the concepts. So when they go to third grade, we don't have so many students who have gaps. Because as we know, we have students who have learning preferences. And when you have units that have 45 lessons, and, again, do we go in and sometimes weed out some lessons, because it's so long? But then there's also then units that should be longer, they only have 15 lessons. You know, so, you know, and then you have students who maybe those 45 lessons, or some of those lessons that we're weeding out, they need them. You know, so I think this is going to give us more opportunities to really differentiate, which is what we really need to do in math. You know, that's why our AIS program are really looking at offering more intervention support in AIS math, because our students are struggling, you know. And we need to, we can't keep doing the same thing.
And is this all workbook-based, like pencil and paper? So it's not a computer?
No, 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 actually, none of the program is a, it's all workbook. Like, there's a workbook that goes with it. There, the teacher has a teacher's guide. There's actually storybooks that go along with it. There's cards that the students can manipulate. There's games that the students do. There's games that the teachers have to have their manipulatives ready for the kids to do. So setting up the centers is going to be easy, because it tells them, set up the center. And it's going to help you, and stuff like that. No, so the actual iReady, again, that's supplemental. So let's say a teacher is working with a group of students and they're still struggling. That teacher could take the iReady digital part and assign it as a Google Classroom homework assignment. And that could be their supplemental support. So they're not, so this is not, it's not computer-based at all. The computer is to support or as a homework.
So there's no digital component to this?
No, this is a regular, this is a regular program. The digital teacher toolbox, that's all supplemental. That's not a program.
I'm confused. Is this going to be a supplemental resource, or is it the base program? I go back to that question.
The teachers are using it as more of a base. And then, if there are students who need more, like the Eureka, they have that available. But they're using it more as a base, because we need our teachers to be able to incorporate centers into their K-2 math program.
Any other questions?
How long have students been using Eureka in comparison to the iReady math?
Well, Eureka's been, I think, what preceded me. Eureka is actually based on the modules that came out in 2012, when Common Core came out.
Right, I was going to say, aren't they?
So it's been a while, because I know.
And ISED created, or are they?
I'm sorry?
It's not a program you purchase, right? It came with?
Yeah, because when Common Core came out, this company, Engage New York, they had all these modules up on the website. The modules were really kind of like in draft form. And then Eureka, what they did was, they took those modules and they really cleaned them up, you know, and made them into books. Because what was on Engage New York, you had to print everything. So it was all printing, all printing, all printing. Eureka put everything and packaged it together. So when you look at Eureka and you look at the modules that are still on Engage New York, it's the same thing. So that's been around for 2012, so that's 12 years. I don't know if Beacon has been using it for 12 years. I know my previous district, we did have it from the onset.
I feel like I remember these from my kids, so.
Is there a cost for it?
Yes.
Give us an idea of how does that work?
Textbook money.
Textbook money?
Yep.
Is it like, kind of like a swap-out, or I guess?
Like, right, Amy?
I guess I don't understand, like, what's this? So there's a couple, there's one question, though, about, I remember when the Common Core was rolled out, because I think my daughter started school around that time. So it was kind of like a traumatic year, as I recall.
For all of us.
Yeah, for every, yeah, I remember that. But I remember hearing that they, you know, that it wasn't developmentally appropriate, that there were concepts that were, you know, too many layers, not for, like, too abstract, all that stuff. But I guess the other question I have is, so that's existed that way for a while. So presumably, there's been time for teachers to adapt to make it more developmentally appropriate. So I don't know if they haven't been supported to do that, or if there's been, I don't know what the reason why that might not have changed or been adapted. But is it that post-COVID, you know, and saying that the lessons are too long now? Was it already too long and developmentally inappropriate? And now we have kids who are maybe academically immature because they've lost a couple of years and they really, really can't sit for that long? So we have to kind of reconfigure everything? Is that sort of what's driving this?
Well, I will tell you, I was around for Common Core as well, as my first year as principal, good times. And I remember the consistent complaint I have always heard about this program in K-2 is the developmental appropriateness of it, even when they were revised. So again, where I was working, we didn't buy the Eureka package program. We were still downloading from the, because it was, we're spending more money on paper, but, you know, whatever. But that was constantly the complaint about it. And that's why I know, the way that I worked with my teacher was, we kind of went through those modules, and we really had to dissect and remove lessons and add lessons and do supplemental lessons. So for example, in second grade, I think the unit on time is only 15 lessons. So then when the students went into third grade, it wasn't enough for them to actually know how to tell time. So then we were actually creating lessons, extra lessons, to teach time to make up for the fact, and we were moving things around. So I remember spending a lot of work on these modules, based on teacher feedback and how students were performing in math. And when we were doing some of our things, we were seeing students doing better. But then, it took a lot of work. It took a lot of work to do it. Again, I don't, I can't speak to what was done here before. But I know that as soon as I kind of walked in through the door, K-2 had been like, yeah! And I said, okay, we're not changing a whole math program without an actual process, a committee, you know, kind of that. I mean, let's see what we can do with this, and kind of go from there. Because we have to, we have to address kind of what we're seeing. So COVID just made it, just made it worse, you know. And I think we have to go a little slower, I think we have to go deeper. I'd rather students not cover as many topics and be really proficient in the topics that we do cover. Because I think that's going to serve us better. And it will cause less anxiety.
It's been a pretty common theme with.
This, it's been a pretty common theme with K one and two teachers in the district for my time here too, about wanting to look at another math program. And Craig, the cost, I can send it to the board. The, the cost of the materials are pretty low in the comparative sense with other companies.
And it comes with professional learning, so they'll, the teachers will get, will go training, you know, to properly implement the program and support them. And, um, we do have our contract with BOSI's. So the person who's been working with us on other, um, and other areas, she's going to be working with the teachers on the centers. And how to incorporate centers into their lessons and how to do small group instruction. So basically teaching math the way you would teach reading.
I just have another question also. So with the, it's more of a supplemental or even as a base, would it be able to go in with Common Core for those higher grades? Cause I disagree with a lot of the points from the beginning. I'm a very why question seeker. And I haven't seen a lot of that in math until my higher years. So if they were able to incorporate that earlier, maybe?
Yeah, if you, if you saw the, the example, like this kids, the students seeing the streets and this is why we learn shapes, because we see them everywhere. It's all aligned, it's all aligned to the next generation standards. That's the one thing, that was one of the, um, the, the requirements when we were kind of looking at programs. We were like, it has to be aligned because if not, when they get to the upper grades, they're going to be missing everything. So if it wasn't aligned, we weren't even going to look at it.
Are there capabilities of it to adapt to even middle school grades within their curriculum?
Or is it most of?
Saying that because in middle school, it's still continued to feel abstract and not grounded in, you know, actual experience?
Yeah. That, that's a whole other conversation, yeah.
Okay, I didn't know if it would go with Common Core, if it was its own thing, starting at younger grades for now, so.
Well, right now, all of us, the state of New York, we're all doing new standards. So I know the teachers are working on, on ensuring that their units of study in all subject areas are aligned to the next generation standards. And looking at making things more engaging. So it's going to take some time, but we do have to, you know, um, look at how we can improve our practices. So you're talking about that why? So the students understand why it's relevant. Because I'm with you, I went through it and which is why I was a literacy person, not a math person.
But it's no longer Core Common Core though, correct?
No, Common Core is.
It's next generation.
Yep.
It's, I mean, it's slightly off topic, but that is something that if you have, like, if you can share the experience of what is different from higher level math and that you feel like it's answering the why and the, what you'd like to see pushed down to a younger age of, and you were saying something about your sister.
But that's what, but that's what you're doing though, right?
She's saying K two?
Yeah, with the hopes that.
As a pilot, I mean.
With the hopes that, so you're teaching them the why now. And then you're starting them now, then at the why, so that as they grow, it's always there. It's never been there, so now they're still confused. And then yes, there's some higher grades where maybe you go more into why. But that's because that's what that, that math does, like geometry or whatever that stats, whatever that is, that's the base, that's going to give you the why. But like starting on that K one and two with the why and all that, it's, you're, 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 you're giving them the added resources and things that they need. So when they get to three, four, five, whatever, it's, they know how to ask certain things or they can, they can under, they can comprehend it a little better now. Because they learned the why part at K one two.
Yep, it's, it's that, it's building that, you know, when you're building the house, if your basement, if you're, if you don't have that solid foundation, you can't build the house. So we're trying to do that where they're, where yes, if I actually understand that concept and not the arithmetic, then when I get to that harder thing, I just know. I already know, I'm like, well, I'm doing algebra because I'm going to confront in life an X at some point. Where I'm not going to know what this is, so I have to figure it out with a formula.
I, I, I feel like I, I apologize because I'm not being clear. I, I totally understand the value of this and I see where you're going with it. I think what I was asking was just specifically that we have this, we are, we're building that pilot and that will capture these younger kids, K two. But we have students who've gone through the middle school, who have now started high school, who might be, there's a, there's an opening here where they're not being served.
Gotcha.
And so if there's a stopgap of like identifying some of the issues and giving kind of tips to some of the teachers who are, who, cause there's going to be this missed piece. Like in between, like these K two kids are going to develop up through. But right now we have kids, third, fourth, fifth, starting sixth. And I know a lot of studies around math in girls is that the gap just becomes massive in middle school. So that's where it, like they fall off the cliff and you lose girls from the sort of STEAM program. So if there's a way to start thinking about just ways to plug in some of these strategies, like whether it's a professional development day or something about the, that sort of why. I think that, especially because of COVID and these loss, learning losses that we've had, so that we don't lose kids while we're closing this.
Good point. I know in our last professional learning day, we did have someone from BOSI's work with the secondary math teachers on interventions in the upper grades. So how to do them within the classroom, because they did ask for it. Like they did say, you know, we have some students that are coming in and they're missing things and they're struggling and we're not sure what to do. And I said, all right, I can't help you with that, but I'll find someone who will. You know, so we do have someone who is actually a secondary person, which is good. That's what she does, she does math at the secondary level and she spent a good two hours with them.
That's great.
You know, we're going to have follow up, so. The nice thing about BOSI's is if I can't do it, I have someone there.
Right.
I just wanted to add on that, um, my sister actually just, um, is going to go into seventh grade and she was in sixth grade this year. And, um, there are, like, I had to, um, there, I had times I'd find myself helping my sister out with, um, general algebra equations and such. Because there's so holes in, um, general mathematics that like aren't covered in elementary that come into the sixth grade math. And that sixth grade environment is just like different. Like when you're doing percentages, for example, and you have percentages with variables, it real, there's a really big gap into under, like, understanding what's happening there. Like what is this decimal? And, um, I think reinforcing how you look at these decimals and how you look at these things as like a, I guess, as a, I guess, variable in itself for like real world examples. Really helps to like grasp the whole algebra concept. Because as you get into like further grades and like really as you do SAT math in itself, there's so many concepts which are developed in elementary. And, um, some students end up struggling like with fractional addition and multiplication. That all is created as like a foundation in elementary, which if it's not created as a foundation in elementary, it's going to suck to go through middle school and high school. It's just really hard.
I feel like for my daughter, that gap kind of opened up and that was, and you know, it, especially like she has a learning disability. So she already felt embarrassed to ask for help and felt dumb. And, you know, she went from like in middle school, then kind of folding under herself and feeling it was like things she should already know. She didn't have a older brother like yourself to sort of lean on. And it was only until we started seeing those gaps and there was just, it's hard to say like, oh, here's, here's where it started and here are the resources. So, and then it becomes harder and harder and harder to close this.
Agreed. Talked to someone who cried through two Regents exams in math. So I totally understand. Yes, sir.
I think one of the problems that's been touched upon here is that it is a foundational thing. It's like bricks. You can't build the fourth course of brick until you've laid the third and so on. And if you get off the track, you just get more and more off. And then it's like bang, somebody's like totally shutting down. So where do we catch them in that process? I mean, this is a classroom thing. It's, it's about monitoring. I mean, if I flunk a test, I know that I'm screwing up. But I think what often happens is, you know, the teacher is confronted with a curriculum that says we're supposed to get from point A to point Z in the course of how many ever weeks we have left in this year. And, uh, the people that get left behind, get left behind and it gets worse and worse. So I think a lot of our success is going to be, how do we interrupt that, that problem? And catch it, uh, somewhere along the line and provide the extra help that's needed. So maybe, you know, if you're lucky, you've got a big brother, I mean, that, that helps. Or maybe a parent that can get you to sit down and talk about it and knows enough about it to help you, which is not always the case.
Yep, I didn't have a big brother.
A lot of people studied that in school and never used it in life.
Well, that's why, um, we are.
Where's the help?
We are, um, re, relooking at our, reframing our AIS program in math. You know, so we have the two teachers that we are going to be adding for, that way if a student is struggling at the elementary level, they get the intervention. You know, so as the teacher is seeing, oh, I see that the student is struggling. And hopefully, because there's going to be more time for that small group instruction, the teacher will catch it quickly. So they can either do remediation themselves. And if that doesn't work, then we are going to have folks who are going to be able to pick the students up and kind of work on those really foundational skills.
Are there any plans for relooking into the middle school curriculum? Cause I feel like a lot of those whys are missing from middle school especially. Like when you're in elementary school, you know, they give you like the basic examples of like, here's two M and Ms. And then you take another two M and Ms and then that gives you four M and Ms, you know? Or like a pie and then you're dividing it. And like, those are kind of real life situations, but once you start to get to algebra, I feel like a lot of students are kind of scared to ask, but why? But why is this X here?
I think like in middle school, it becomes disassociated from real life and math. It just becomes two separate topics and no one can actually relate how they're connected. So that just creates a disparity among people who love the problem and to who just don't understand it and don't want to focus in on why you're doing what you're doing.
That's true. Well, again, that's one of the things that we are working with the teachers on. So on those professional development days with a consultant from BOSI's, you know, because we have to. Yep, so again, I was one of those students, I needed the why. If I would have known the why, it might have made a difference, so. Any other questions?
Thank you, student advisors for all the.
Yeah, no, I think.
Great to have the student perspective.
Good report, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hersch, you're going to have to start a tutoring program for middle.
I'm like, I'll be grabbing your number, Hersch.
Add it to the, to the list of things you have going on.
You're super, you already started a tutoring program though, didn't you?
Well, at the high school.
Yeah, well, so it's easy to expand from there. That was your pilot and now. You're going to solve it, Hersch. So while we're giving you guys attention, do you have any comments that you wanted, any other comments you want to share with us? How's it, we haven't seen you, it's been busy, we haven't had a board meeting in a while.
All our finals really just hit us.
You, you threw most of it now or?
Other than closing out on the year, I feel like we're all, me and Ari especially, just trying to appreciate all the opportunities that we were getting as seniors. You know, our awards nights, sports, closing out. So we're really grateful for all those things.
Congratulations to you guys, I saw some pictures online. Yeah. And I, in case we don't get the chance, I want to thank you for your participation this year. It's been really great having you on the board and learning from you.
I want to say thank you as well. It's been an honor to like sit here amongst all of you. I feel like I learned so much this year and to just be here with you is like a great opportunity. So thank you for providing us the space to, you know, listen to our opinions and hear what we have to say.
Thank you.
Second that.
Now, are the seniors, are you going to be here later tonight?
What are you talking about?
We're being recorded.
Oh, I don't know. Sorry, I was just trying to get the evidence, but we'll let it go.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Reviewing the agenda, there are a couple of changes. We have added to business, new business, John Galloway's resignation that I'll talk about then. Twelve point one five, letter O now reads, appoint restorative and responsive practices facilitator. Appoint the following staff at a stipend of sixty dollars an hour, according to the BTA contract effective July thirty first, twenty twenty-three through August second, twenty twenty-three. And number one is Michelle and only Michelle Pohamus, the number one and only. Twelve point two four, letter X, home instructor coordinator, remove John G. Metta and add Brian Saltish. And then fifteen point oh seven, um, the PDF has been replaced with one that didn't have a typo. Thank you, Eunice for catching that. You're welcome. So can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual and to receive legal advice from the district attorney? And the board will return in about a half hour.
Uh, have a question, are we going to talk about negotiations at all?
No.
Okay. Just notice counsel is here.
Yes. That was in that. Thank you, Alina, second from Eunice. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Opposed? Um, I'm also in favor of passing seven to zero. First up is.
Thanks, Mike.
Superintendent's report.
I'll be pretty brief tonight. I, I wanted to just briefly mention two things. One, Meredith, you announced at the beginning of the meeting about accepting John Galloway's resignation. I just wanted to say thank you to him for me. Craig, I have one more meeting left to, to talk about you. But, uh, it, it was such a pleasure to get to know John through the board. He, to have someone who just so recently went through the school district as a student. All the connections he has in the community, all the insight. Just a, just a powerful person to get to know and to learn from. And so I just want to say, I texted all this to John the other night, uh, but if he's watching, I just want to say a huge thank you for his service to the board. Uh, it's greatly appreciated. And then secondly, I mentioned, uh, way earlier in the meeting tonight, uh, just wanted to, uh, just take a minute to mention the absolute massive effort that goes into, uh, the Sharp reservation trip for fifth graders. An image sticks in my mind, I, I mentioned, I sort of got pressed into chaperoning kind of at the last minute, which I was, I was happy about. But, um, and so I was kind of walking, uh, my group of boys back to their cabin. It was fairly late, ten or ten thirty, and we were walking past the dining hall and you could see in the windows and it's like ten fifteen, ten thirty. And there are all of our teachers, like organizing that space, moving chairs, moving tables at ten thirty at night, like. And, and when they had been on all day with, you know, a bunch of ten and eleven year olds. And so not only the teachers, but every single staff person that had a role, nurses, teaching assistants, classroom aides, administrators, and then all the chaperones. Just want to give a huge shout out to what an amazing experience this is for the students, but also just the massive amount of effort that goes in. Uh, I want to say thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you. So next we have board comments. I'm, I am not going to put you on the spot, Summer, but I do want to just welcome you to the board. Thank you for taking the, the open seat. So your, Eric Shutter will be appointed at the reorg meeting in July. Summer Urson is here tonight and, um, we welcome you. And if you have any comments, you're welcome to, to make them.
Don't say that there's nothing in this for you.
Like a good name tag.
Do we need to, oh, John, do we need to deliver Johns to, you know?
Oh, yeah. I'll take John his. Just put tape.
You get to keep it forever.
Yeah, I have almost all the letters. Anyway, welcome. Kristen, do you have any board comments?
Yeah, I mean, I'm a little sad that we lost the room for it. But I think, um, this is, this, this Germany thing is definitely kind of the first test of something that I've been seeing developing over, um, a while here in Beacon. Which is just that we, um, w- w- our community is, it has become increasingly divided. It's becoming extremely wealthy and we retain a core of students who are at, um, or below poverty. And that is going to be so tricky to hem together. And I think that, I don't doubt, and we, we definitely want students to have great experiences. And I don't doubt that, you know, we should foster opportunities for international experiences, for, um, you know, for reaching as far as we can in terms of learning and excellence. I just think one of our real tasks here is to create a common community across a lot of difference. And, you know, when some of the kids mentioned that they hadn't spoken to some of their classmates, to me, that was, you know, that it took students from Germany coming in for them to have conversations with classmates. That for me was kind of the bigger takeaway, that we have a lot of work to do to create connection within this community. And, um, and a lot of these things like what Matt has talked about in terms of signature experiences, fun, really great memories, like Sharp. You know, that my husband was a chaperone at Sharp and my son came back early, but my husband had to finish being a chaperone. And, uh, he was driving back very tired from the last day and he got a, um, he got a ticket. And, uh, he, the cop was like, he, he was like, I'm sorry, I'm coming back from Sharp. And that cop was like, I did Sharp. Whole conversation about it. And so it is one of those things that's similar to Calco Ball, like one of those things that kind of connects across years and creates this experience in the district and an identity. And so, um, I think one of the things about this was no one is standing in the way of it happening. If parents want to organize it and it wants to be something that's grassroots. If parents want to organize it and it wants to be something that's grassroots and community-led, I think that we're always, we'll always expect that the administration will find ways to partner, but I think that like, this can't be a wag the dog thing. Like, it can't be people with time and privilege and certain connections coming in and saying this is how they'd like something to be. We're, we're not kind of, we're a, we're a district that serves children from preschool all the way through high school and, and a very wide variety of people. And so we need to figure out a way to meet a lot of needs at once. And when you come in with ideas and something that would be nice, it takes up a lot of time and resources and, you know, an hour of tonight where it would've been nice to be fresh and really looking at the, you know, math curriculum, which will have a longer tail impact. So, no one's here, I doubt they'll ever look at this tape, but, but it's just, I think, as far as our work together, that's where I see the most important responsibility that we have, is to stay focused on that.
I agree. Thank you. Eunice?
I'm not going to top that.
Thank you. Alina?
I want to agree with Kristin. It is a fabulous idea, right? Like, it's, it's amazing, but you're right, like, the, the gap or the wide range of families that we have here at Beacon. And if more time could've been put into it as far as fundraising, more education on how to fundraise, how to raise money, it was, it seemed like it was just kind of like, put together so quickly. And not everybody that could have benefited from it was able to because some people can't just come up with that money like that or have the time to go to West Point on Saturdays all day to fundraise. But if more time was put into it by, by other parents or however it is, and like you said, as a, as a school district, we'll support in any way we can in that regard, but not that financial win. I'm, I love that Matt explained it as signature, like, signature events. Like, that's just a great way to put it because my, my child was extremely happy to go to Ellis Island, like, and, and where my freshman was highly upset that freshmen didn't get to go anywhere this year. And I have to explain to her, it's coming, it's happening. Like, we're, we're, we're making that a priority. We're making that something where we have more things so that students can't sit here and say, well, I don't talk to other people in my class, right? Like, we don't want that to why we're trying to do these signature events. And I think that that's more important before we go in and jump to something like Germany. And even, and then, and then we even said, we'll look at other things like Italian or Spanish speaking. Like, we're, so we're like, we're so far in, but, but yeah, so like, I think that, I thank them for sharing their experience because it is an amazing experience and I enjoy listening to it and, and hearing about it, but I'm more excited right now just this signature event that we're gonna be able to put on for our students here in the district that we can either offset some of the costs and parents and families don't have to come out their pockets so much to pay for those things. So, yeah.
Thank you. Anthony?
I'd like to wish John well. It was, I had the pleasure of sitting next to him, so he's a good young man. For the Germany thing, I don't know what they're asking the district for. There's agencies out there where you could get foreign exchange students and you could partner with them and you could put your name in a ring and you could be part of that. So, like, I don't know what they're asking for the district. We have policies that allow students to attend if they're not district residents and stuff. So if it's something policy-wise that they want us to look at, I'd be happy to look at, but there's agencies that they could go to. I don't really see it being a school issue. That's, that's more of an outside thing, so. End of school year, kids are feeling embunctious. I know they're getting ready for the, they had a Regents already and I know that the high schoolers are, you know, getting ready for the end of the year, so it's really nice to see. I know that the prom season was a success here, just having a high school student, and they thoroughly enjoyed it. So, they're looking forward to the end of the year activities and hopefully the nice weather continues.
Thank you. Craig?
Yeah, I'm sorry to see John Galloway leave the board. I thought it was a good thing that he came on and I wish him well. I was privileged to attend a science event in this room a couple of weeks ago. It was really amazing and I was just blown away, including looking at some of the exhibits that were out in the hallway and thinking, am I in a college or is this a high school? Because there was college-level work that was being done in, in a lot of these projects. And some of the presentations were quite impressive and some of the subject matter covered various aspects of science, more so than you'd normally see in the ordinary science fair, I would say. Although this wasn't really a science fair, it was more of a seminar, a forum for presentation of, I guess you'd call it lecture demonstration on your, on your work. And I felt that we'd made a very substantial step forward out of, out of the blue. So, I wonder where that will go in the future. On the exchange student program, some very nice comments from, from people who clearly demonstrate the benefits of it, but I came into the meeting wondering, as Mr. White said, what are we being asked here? I'm not quite sure. I, I think it's about money, you know? And when, if you want to ask me for money, go ahead and ask and I'll say yes, no, or whatever, but if it's like, you're kind of laying it between the lines, then I get a little confused and wonder if I'm being made the object of a technique, which I don't like. I like the program. I like what they're doing. I think it's done a lot of good. I'm just not sure, you know, it's like, where do we go from here? And I would like to see a, a written description of the details of how a program like this actually works and that it should address the very issue that we're going to address on our consent agenda, which I assume is there because we presume that we all are in agreement with that policy relating to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And any kind of program that we do here, it's, if we do it for one, we do it for all. And that has to be carried through. I mean, not everybody will make the football team, but they all can try out, you know? So, and not everybody can afford to buy a new dress for the senior prom, but nobody's denied the opportunity to go. So, these are tricky issues and I think Kristin addressed it very eloquently, that we must face this as an issue going forward and how we balance the equities so that it comes out that we're still a public school district doing what a public school district needs to do, which is to serve all comers. So, that would be my thoughts going forward.
Thank you. I have a few things. I'll start with Germany, just to, you know, I think Kristin said it very well. I, I, I agree. I'm not completely sure what we were being asked. I'm glad that the program happened. I was called by a desperate parent in the fall, wondering if I would host a German exchange student because they didn't have enough people that were willing to participate, even though they were trying to keep it with only sophomores and I have a junior. So, it sounds like it grew and, and I know that it was a really positive experience for, I, I do think for the whole school and I'm really grateful to the administrators that helped to facilitate it because I know that there was a lot of work that went in from district employees. And it's not something I want to block, but I, I do, and I think international experiences are amazing, but I do think it would be great to pursue something with a language that we teach because I think that would, it would really enrich the experience even more for the students. So that would be something I would really be happy to see. Moving on, I want to thank the one board member that filled out their, their board evaluation. I'm not gonna name any names. Oh, I guess she's
I'm gonna name her, Lena.
But I want to thank her and, and I want to encourage everybody else to do the same. It doesn't take very long. I use it to try to build whatever retreat we do in the fall or in the winter. So I really appreciate your participation there. I also attended the science symposium. It was the culmination of four years, a program that we started four years ago and it was, it was really amazing. It was completely student organized, student-driven and so, so impressive. And they would like to maybe have a student come and present to the board, which I would love, so look for that in the future.
Yeah.
Also, this was a really long time ago, but we haven't had board comments a long time. I went to Film Fest, which was super great and they had, last year there was one high school submission, this year there were 36, so that was a huge improvement and I'm really grateful to the media teacher for encouraging, maybe forcing, his students to each make a little movie.
Facilitated their submitting.
Yeah.
He encouraged them and facilitated them, like, the paperwork and
Right. Which was great. It was so great to have. And then, and they're all gonna be up on their website, I think, at some point and I encourage everyone to look because there were some really fantastic ones. John Galloway, I spoke to him on the phone. He was very, very positive about his board experience and, you know, I think a little bit regretful that he had to end his term early, but he is, I don't want to name his age, but he's much younger than I am. And I can't imagine being on the board when I was that age. I, I'm really impressed that he stuck it on as long as he did. He's trying to, you know, figure out who he is as an adult and so, I'm, I'm grateful to have gotten to know him better and I think it was, I think it was a really rough beginning and ended up being a very positive experience for all of us. So, a lot of gratitude to John. And we will be having, I think the only committee meeting that we're gonna have before reorg is policy because we've got to look at the code of conduct and I think currently it's penciled in for the 21st. So, Flor is not here to confirm that, but whoever's on policy, Eunice, is that you?
Yeah, yeah. The 21st?
Yeah, think about the 21st.
Okay.
Put it in your calendars.
How about, how about moving up as the
Oh, yeah, the 21st is moving up ceremony.
Eighth grade.
Eighth grade.
Oh, for eighth grade?
Yeah.
Was there another date that we set? Was it the week after? 26? Oh, yeah, that was the other date.
Okay.
Okay, 26. Let's say the 26th.
Thank you.
That one doesn't, we're away. You want to do before the?
We don't have to do it before reorg, right? We just have to do it by the end of the, okay. So, there will be a, an email going around for policy. We'll make it happen. Okay, that's all from me. So, business, we've already talked about John Galloway's resignation. I did want to take a second just to talk about moving forward with his seat. I think we should hold this discussion until Eric Shutter is sworn in and we have sort of what the current board will be. We have three options when a seat opens before the end of the term. One is to leave the seat open until the next election. The second is for us to appoint a member ourselves through an interview process. And the third is, exists but is never used, to ask BOCs to appoint a member for us. So, I just wanted you guys to know, those are our options and when, once we get Eric on board, we can talk about what we want to do there. I brought this up before and I intend to bring it up again, that perhaps we should think about shrinking the board and living for the year with an eight-member board and then, you know, the process for that is to put it on the ballot. So we can talk about that in the future.
For an eight-member board?
No, no, for a seven-member, live with an eight-member board.
I thought you were saying, talk about an eight-member board, okay.
No, I don't think an eight-member is a great idea.
It's a
No, we would have an eight-member board until the next election.
And in our discussion, we can look at the size of boards in the area, but I think like, Poughkeepsie has like, five.
Yeah, a seven-member board is sort of the average and most districts are size. Some do have nine, but I think most have seven. I actually have that data from Anthony saying way back when, so I'll dig that up. Consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any board members would like to have voted on separately?
11.01.
Shocking.
12.21. U-12.
U-12?
U-12. 12.21, U-12.
U-12. Okay, any others? Okay, can I have a motion to approve 11.01 through, oh my gosh, a long one. 15.08 less 11.01 and 12.21 U-12. Alina, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kristin. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in, in favor, passes seven to zero. Thanks for the donation, two donations. Yeah. And can I have a motion to approve 11.01?
So moved.
Kristin, can, is there a second? Second by, is that you?
Second, yes.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Pose.
I am in favor, passes six to one. Can I have a motion to approve 12.21 U-12? I'll send that to you later. Yeah. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Kristin, is there a second?
Okay.
Alina, comments or questions?